Okay, I'd like to call to order the Mount Pleasant Public School Board of Education regular meeting on May 17th, 2021 at 6:30 PM in the Mount Pleasant Public School Performing Arts Center. This is a meeting of the Mount Pleasant Public Schools Board of Education. It's a meeting conducted in the public but is not a meeting of the public. There is a time for public participation during the meeting as indicated in the agenda. The purpose of today's meeting is to conduct regular business that requires action by the board. These items may include those discussed at a previous meeting or presented to the Board of Discussion earlier this evening. Call to order, as a courtesy, please turn off and silence your cell phones and stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. (Clerk) I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands aloneation, honor, peace, and the principle of liberty and justice Mount Pleasant Public Schools is honored to acknowledge the Inishina'abe people whose traditional land we are gathered on today. To recognize the Inishina'abe people and their ancestral land is our expression of gratitude and appreciation, and a way of honoring the indigenous people who have been living and working on this land since time immemorial, and whose land on which the Saginaw Shipewatt Indian Tribe have resided and who have continued to reside on for centuries. We feel it is important to understand the longstanding history of this land and to seek to understand our place within that history. Next is roll call. Courtney?
Dana Cockens?
Here.
Tim Oderkirk?
Here.
Sheila Murphy?
Here.
Jessica Jernigan?
Here.
Courtney Stegman?
Here.
Willene Pangle?
Here.
Amy Bond?
Here.
Next is the approval of the agenda. Is there anything that anybody wanted to add? Okay. Next is the Student Board of Education Representative Report.
My name is Isabel Goodridge and I am the new Vice President of External Communications for the high school, and I will be joined by Kalen King, who wasn't able to make it tonight. So, a few of the upcoming events that we have coming up are the Senior Ice Cream Social will be the 27th, the senior yard signs will be handed out sometime within the next two weeks, and the Senior Farewell Tour will be the 25th. And we also wanted to say thank you to everyone that was able to make it to our reverse parade. So, yeah, thank you.
Thank you. Next is the Superintendent Report.
Good evening, everyone. The first item under my report is an update on our year-end events. You do have in your board packet this evening a list of many of the events that Isabel was just talking about with specific information regarding times and locations. We're certainly hopeful that you can join us as much as you are able to do so. I think it's important to note that the Mount Pleasant High School graduation, if you've not yet already done so, please connect with Liz Bush, who will make sure that you have your graduation gown for that. Are there any questions about year-end events? The next part of my report is looking to the future. As you all know, we are in the position where we are considering going out for a bond issue in November of 2021. And this evening Josh Rhodes is going to highlight for us some of the projects. It would be included in that bond proposal, and then Ginger Faber will go through some of the financing for us. So, I will first turn it over to Josh. Thank you for being here tonight.
Good evening, everyone. Once again, my name's Josh Rhodes, Director of Facilities for Mount Pleasant Public Schools, and this is kind of going to be a highlight of what we are hoping to accomplish with the next bond if it were to pass. Being from my department, it's going to seem a little facility-heavy, and I'm not a tech guy, so I'll say some technology stuff and then just know it's way, there's a lot more involved with that. So, first of all, we are looking at things like indoor air quality, obviously given the current situation. We are looking at adding air conditioning to all buildings, which will then coincide with replacing all of our unit vents that still take old air filters and high MERV-rated filters. At that same point, we can replace those with a higher MERV-rated system, which will be better given situations like we're currently in. Technology upgrades across the district, including security cameras, upgrading PA systems, systems that are better for like alerting, you know, that situation like an active shooter situation in loud places like cafeterias, gymnasiums with different color flashing strobes, stuff like that. Becoming a one-to-one district, so each student, you know, having their own technology device so they were not passing them out and doing what we're, you know, what we're currently doing. It would be a phased approach, so multiple phases to the bond, which would spread out, purchasing 20 new buses over the next, you know, foreseeable amount of time, which would keep a good rotation going for the transportation department. Fancher Elementary would receive a new cafeteria addition, almost doubling their current space. They would receive some bathroom remodels, some roofing, some roofing issues, so half that building's still outdated roof, so replacing that. Upgrading boiler pumps at multiple schools, the remaining of our 20-plus-year-old boilers, so Fancher, Maguire, Middle School, the high school, which increases the building's efficiency and will reduce cost of operations. Gannard Elementary would receive a new entrance. Their pillars and stuff like that are pretty rough shape, but... And a new exterior canopy to the south parking lot, which would drastically increase parking accessibility and kind of relieve some of that congestion in that back parking lot. They have some staff bathroom remodels, new blinds and window treatments. And, yeah, renovation to the media center. Maguire Elementary, we're looking at remodeling some gang bathrooms, installing window treatments, and, yeah, some landscaping needs there as well. Vowels Elementary, we're looking at window treatments, remodeling more group bathrooms, remodeling some staff bathrooms, remodeling a lot of classroom bathrooms that are pretty old and outdated and kind of getting to be in rough shape there. Looking at some countertops throughout the whole building. The casework's in good shape, but a lot of the countertops are getting pretty rough. Middle School, so this would be a bigger ticket item. We are looking at refiguring the site plan to help with all that congestion on Bradley. I know that's been an issue forever. We are currently working with a CMU professor that is involved with logistics over there, so hopefully between him and our architects and everyone involved, we can come up with just a better design over there. A new weight room addition. So, weight room is also instructional now for strength and conditioning. So, by adding on and creating this new addition, we will also create several more offices, which they are desperately needing at the moment. Adding some basketball courts outside, in between the track and the parking lot, which will give kids a fenced-in area to go play, you know, hang for lunch periods instead of it's kind of a free-for-all out there right now. It's hard to manage, and they don't have a lot to do because our tennis courts are kind of outdated. Basketball courts are essentially using the parking lot, so it's just not a safe design. And this will get us a couple basketball courts out there fenced in, you know, right in a great location, give them a place to hang out, let alone better facilities for like PE classes and stuff. The high school would receive some auditorium LED lighting, which these lights are very expensive to run, so I, by switching these over to LED, we will definitely save some money in the long run. Some control boards and stuff like that, which is definitely not my area of expertise. Remodeling to the athletics barn. We are very tight for space out there for storage for all of our athletic programs, so that might get, or it's in need of a new roof, some siding, and in addition to make it a little larger. In the phased approach, we're looking at replacing the shingles here on the pitch sections. They're still good as of now, so I'm hoping to draw that out later into the bond. That way, we can kind of get our bangs, our money worth out of this. A new weight room addition here as well. Ours is very small. I don't know if you've ever seen ours with, and especially when you put 30 kids in there, it's pretty tight. Our equipment is pretty old and outdated. And new temperature controls for this building, which will help provide more efficiency and lower cost of operations. Some more on the district-wide stuff, so replacing the existing roof out at Rosebush, repurposing our old oasis building, which is just cold storage right now, but it's pretty rough inside, so just gutting that room and just having a better, cleaner cold storage building, so. Interior renovations and building infrastructure upgrades to visions out on Bamber Street. Right now, that, we do not have water or sewer connections, so that building is kind of just sitting there stagnant. It's a very nice building, beautiful building, so we would like to be able to get that up and running again. Building upgrades to our maintenance facility, just some flooring upgrades because we have some flooring in some pretty, pretty rough shape at our shop and the break room for the transportation side. New storage sheds at all buildings, pretty much. Our custodians use storage sheds for their snow blowers, their salt, all of that stuff, and a lot of ours are all T-111. They're all pretty rotted out and faded and need some work, so we're looking at going to like a maintenance-free storage shed that would last, you know, forever, hopefully. And new electronic message signs at the high school, middle school, Vowels, Pollin, Maguire, Gannard, and Fancher. That's about it.
So, you can see from our variety of projects, we're focused on really our infrastructure, those critical components that we need to continue to update, safety and security, and then also technology. That seems to be the three areas where most of our improvements are coming. So, our district is in really great shape. This allows us to plan out for the next 10 years, so we'll continue to be in good shape. So, thank you for going through all that, Josh. Ginger, do you want to explain the schedule from RJ?
Yes, so we do have the opportunity, as we've mentioned in this, you know, in this environment before, to ask our taxpayers on the ballot in November to approve a $41 million bond project for a no-mill increase over the current levy. So, that's pretty exciting, being able to generate this amount of money for no millage increase for our taxpayers over the current levy. Sorry, I'll get closer. You can hear me now?
Yes.
Okay. So, just recapping what I said, we have an opportunity to go ask our taxpayers in November on the ballot to approve a $41 million bond project for a no-millage increase over the current levy. So, it's a very exciting opportunity for the district and for the community to generate that kind of money for no additional millage over the current levy. In working with our construction management company, our architect, our technology consulting company, the financial advisors, it seems that the best way for us to move forward is to sell the bond in four different series. When we're talking about moving to a one-to-one district for technology and replacing school buses and things like that, you definitely don't want to purchase them all at once because then you have to replace them all at once. So, in selling the bond in four different series, that would allow us to stagger those purchases and replacements. We're looking at if this millage passes in November, about February of 2022, we would sell the first series for $20 million. In 2024, we would sell the second series for $15 million. And then in 2027, we would sell the third series for $3 million. And again, in 2031, we would sell the fourth series for $3 million. In every single one of these series, when we, when we sell them, we have to spend 85% of the proceeds within the first three years. So, we would be, you know, hitting the bigger projects right away with the first bigger millage and then buying some technology and buses and stuff with that first series also, but then staggering the purchases out throughout the series.
Thank you, Ginger.
You're welcome.
Does anyone have any questions regarding the bond proposal?
I did notice that the first item on Josh's list was AC units, and so I just wanted to make sure that was every classroom in our district?
Yes.
That's really good news because I know some of these classrooms are really hot.
And so, what we've done to date is more unit vents on individual classrooms, so this would be building-wide systems, so it would be much more efficient, too.
That's awesome. Thank you. And then the Fancher Cafeteria, are we talking an addition or are we renovating space that's already there?
It is an addition. We need more space to be able to get more students through the cafeteria at the same time.
And that would go in the back? I guess I'm trying to picture what that would look like.
So, it would be added on, Josh, you're probably better at talking about this than I am. It would be added on to the footprint of the current cafeteria, so it would go out to the west side of the building?
Towards Kenny.
Towards Kenny Street.
Okay, thank you.
So, our next steps in this process is to continue narrowing the focus of our projects, to continue narrowing the budget down, and working with folks from Wolgast, King Scott, our architect, and Communication by Design, our technology consultants, to help us do those three things. We are meeting with the Treasury on June 15th. That will be when we will finalize bond language, and then we would bring that information to the board for an official approval after that point. We've got a little bit more work to do, but we wanted you to know where we were in our planning processes. If there's anything that comes to mind that you've heard concerns about from the community, we can look at that to see if it might be something that we want to add as well.
I have a question for Ginger. You said it was a zero-mill increase, but we're going to be selling the bonds over a four different series of bond sales. Will the millage amounts fluctuate depending on that? So, for example, it's 2015-33, which is a big drop in the millage amounts coming in based on the bond sales. Will the millage amount on my tax bill go up, down, move, or will it start, keep at zero, and then things get paid off and just keeps getting readjusted? How would a taxpayer see that as remaining at zero?
Sure. Currently, we levy a total of 3.98 mils between the three different outstanding debts that we have. We're projected to levy 3.9, so we'll already be dropping off 0.08 mils. That's a projection. We're working on all those calculations now, and that will actually come to you next month for approval, as we always do for the summer millage rates. If anything, the millage rates will eventually start dropping down. If some of that old debt is paid off, we can levy less millage to our taxpayers. It will, it will not go up, so it's a no-levy increase.
So, in general, it will always stay 3.9, but what's happening in the background is the old bonds are getting paid off as we're adding on the new ones, and in general, the sum net gain is nothing. It's zero. It stays the same amount?
It, that could be the case, yes. Or, we could figure out that we're selling for a lower interest rate than what we projected or tax bill values are going up. There's a lot of different scenarios, but we could pay off old debt and the millage will not stay at 3.9. It could go down. So, we could still generate that much money, but levy less taxes eventually.
Yeah. Because I know in the past, we've been very, very successful at very, very low interest rates and had very big impact there. We've done that in the past, and it's been very successful. We've actually lowered the millage rate down and actually gained even more cash.
Absolutely, yes. And, and we always project very high, especially for the first year, selling the first series and the interest rates and stuff, so we, I would predict that it's better than what paperwork says right now when it all comes together.
This is a side comment. Historically, our finance people and all the teams that we've had have been freakishly amazing in what they've been able to pull off, so.
Yeah, they're really great to work with.
They're really brilliant human beings. It's been very helpful, and you gave us a lot of detailed information, so it was just kind of hard to digest everything down to see what a taxpayer would say. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Are there any other questions from the board? That's all I have for my report this evening.
Thank you. That's clearly a lot of work has gone into that. Next is the requested financial report. So, I have for you the financial reports this month. Yay! We're working through the new system and figuring things out, and it's definitely going to get easier and smoother as we move along, but for the most part, we were able to keep everything in the same format you're used to, so that's exciting for us, too. So, I have the general fund and special service funds for you comparing revenue expenditure, budget to actual for months ending April 2020 to April 2021. For general fund, our revenues at the end of April were 66% of budget this year compared to 65% last year, and our expenditures are at 68% of budget this year compared to 67% last year. So, we're right on target compared to where we were last year at this time. For our special service funds, athletics, this is our self-sustaining athletic programs. Revenue is at 0% this year compared to 11% last year, and expenditures are at 20% this year compared to 78% last year. This is like the hockey and the pom-pom programs. For the Children's Learning Center, revenue is at 87% of budget this year compared to 85% last year, and expenditures are at 68% of budget compared to 76% last year. And for the nurse testing program, remember, there will no longer be revenue coming into this program. We're just spending down funding balance, so revenue is at 0% both years. Expenditures are at 4% of budget compared to 7% last year. For the food service program, revenue is at 64% of budget both years, and expenditures are at 51% of budget this year compared to 75% of budget last year. We're in a much better place in our food service program this year compared to last year because of the state so graciously allowing us to do free breakfast and free lunch. The more people that utilize those free meals and take those, the better it is for the district. We get more reimbursement back from the state, so it's exciting for our food service program this year. The school store revenue is at 28% this year compared to 99% last year, and expenditures are at 33% this year compared to 89% last year. For our treasures report, in general fund, on March 31st, we had a cash balance of $6.9 million. In the month of April, we had income of $7 million and dispersments of $7.6 million. That brings us to balance on April 30th of $6.3 million. For our debt retirement fund, these are those three bonds that we were just discussing. On March 31st, we had a cash balance of $4.3 million. We had income in the amount of $197,000 and dispersments of three, almost $4 million. That's our large principal and interest payments we make every year out of these ones. The balance on April 30th is back down to $568,000. And for our capital projects fund, on March 31st, we had a cash balance of $2.8 million, very small amount of interest income, $94, and no dispersments in the month of April. That brings us to balance on April 30th of $2.8 million.
Ginger, just tying the first presentation to this presentation, so there's still monies in the capital project fund, which is our last bond issuance of the $2.8 million. So, it's projected to be spent down pretty much the remainder of this, like, summer, we'll say, because we know that there's projects going on this summer.
Yeah, we're hoping to be able to spend that down. I don't know if we have a specific timeline, but I know Josh has been amazing at taking off the punch list and getting a lot of projects done around the district, so we're working on spending all those down as quick as we can.
Yeah, you had, we had mentioned, you had mentioned that there's a window of time that we can spend the monies otherwise.
Correct.
We're still within that window.
Yes. Yep.
And Ginger, you had mentioned that we receive money back for when students take breakfast and lunch. Is that still the case this summer? So, when we are providing free lunch, it is really important that people go to the Gannard and high school so that they can get that because that is money back to us?
Yes, absolutely. So, we will only be dispersing from the high school this summer, but we are dispersing all summer long, I believe, on Wednesdays still, same time, same place, just at the high school, not at Gannard. But it is free all summer long. We urge everyone to utilize that, and we are also able to provide free breakfast and lunch all next school year, too. We already know that, so that's very exciting. But yes, please utilize that service because the more meals we are able to distribute, the more reimbursement income comes back into the district.
Wonderful, thank you.
Yeah.
And also, so the public knows, that's one of the reasons why we have everyone fill out the free and reduced lunch application stuff at the beginning of the school year. Because you do that, we get the money that we can feed the kids of our district. I know it's a pain, but it's a very important thing to have done.
Are there any other questions for Ginger? Thank you. Next is the acknowledgement of correspondence. We did receive correspondence to the whole board on behalf of Mary Center and the National Parents Union, and everyone has read these and they are in our board drive. Next is the consent agenda. First off is the approval of the minutes from the May 3rd, 2021, regular meeting minutes.
I move that we approve those minutes.
I second, Pangle.
Is there any questions? All in favor, say aye.
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 All in, or any nays? So, that unanimously passes. Next is the approval of bills to the amount of $1,288,239.65. Is there a motion to pass that?
No move.
Second.
All right. Any questions? All in favor, say, or, yay?
Yay, aye.
Aye.
Any nays? So, pass. Next is new business.
The first item this evening under new business is to accept the graduation resolution for the members of the class of 2021. So, I'll go ahead and read the resolution. Whereas Mount Pleasant Public Schools Community Education and Way Program will recognize the graduation of members of the class of 2021 on Thursday, May 27th, 2021. Whereas Mount Pleasant High School will recognize the graduation of members of the class of 2021 on Sunday, June 6th, 2021. Whereas the prospective list of graduates of the class of 2021 attached to this resolution has met the graduation requirements as set forth by the state of Michigan. Therefore, be it resolved that the prospective list of graduates for the May and June 2021 as certified by the Mount Pleasant Public Schools is approved. We're asking for your vote on this resolution this evening.
I move that we approve the resolution for the graduating class of 2021.
Seconded. All in favor? Oh, sorry, any questions? And this is a roll call, but Courtney?
Dana Cockens?
Yes.
Tim Oderkirk?
Yes.
Sheila Murphy?
Yes.
Jessica Jernigan?
Yes.
Courtney Stegman?
Yes.
Willene Pangle?
Yes.
Amy Bond?
Yes.
Congratulations. All right, next is the certified staff retirement.
Good evening, everyone. We would like the board to approve with appreciation the retirement of Kathy Burlington. She is a computer teacher at Mount Pleasant Middle School, and also Colleen Russell, also a teacher at Mount Pleasant Middle School. They will be retiring at the end of this school year.
I move that we accept the retirements of Kathy Burlington and Colleen Russell with much appreciation for years of commitment to the kids of this district. Thank you.
I second, sweetie.
Is there any questions? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That unanimously passes. Thank you very much for all of your service. Next is new hires.
Yes, we are excited to ask the board to hire Kyle Campbell. As you know, it's rather challenging to find someone sometimes for these special certifications needed for our GI Tech Center, and Kyle will be our new Small Engines teacher at the GI Tech Center this year.
Is there a motion to accept the new hire of Kyle Campbell?
No move. Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Unanimously passes, and welcome to the district. All right, next is the contract renewal, the ESS 2021-2024 contract renewal.
You have in your board packets this evening a memo and a contract between the Mount Pleasant Public Schools and ESS, which is formerly known as PCMI. This is the group that we contract our substitute teachers and our coaches that do not work for the district. So, we're asking that you approve this contract this evening. There are no increases to the rates that we pay to ESS. The only difference is that they're asking this year for a three-year renewal. Typically, we do a one-year renewal with them. Typically, we do a one-year renewal with them. There really isn't anyone else in this game, if you will. And ESS is used RESD-wide. So we support the idea of approving a contract extension through June thirtieth of two thousand twenty-four.
Is there a motion to approve the contract?
No move.
Second. Thank you. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That universally passes. Thank you. Next is the Sex Education Advisory Board Appointment Recommendation.
Yes, I thought I'd start with sharing with the board on what the Sex Ed Advisory Board does. The Sex Ed Advisory Board exists to establish program goals and objectives for student knowledge and skills that are likely to reduce the rates of teen sex, pregnancy, and sexually transmitted disease. The Sex Ed Advisory Board is made up of volunteers who apply to be part of this group and they serve in three-year terms. So we have a nice, long list of candidates that we are recommending the board to approve tonight. Kate Connors is the current co-chair of the Sex Ed Advisory Board. She will represent a parent within the district. Heather Wazinski is a current member. Heather is also a parent and also serves as the district health education representative. Alexia Torres is a teacher in the district and a graduate of Mount Pleasant. She will have a kindergarten and kindergartner also entering this fall. Corinne Verona is an elementary and high school parent. Kathleen Bunker is an elementary school teacher. Makayla Crowell is a new employee of Mount Pleasant Public Schools and she will be joining as the new high school education, health education representative. Abigail Lewandowski is also an employee of the Mount Pleasant High School, a special ed teacher and an English teacher. And she is going to be involved because she also has a health certification. And last but not least is Mr. Andrew France, and he will serve on the board as a clergy member.
Is there any questions? Is there a motion to pass Kate, Heather, Alexia, Corinne, Kathleen, Makayla, Abigail, and Andrew onto the Sex Education Advisory Board?
I move that we accept the recommendation for the appointment of those who were mentioned.
I second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That universally passes. Thank you very much for your time and dedication to the district. Next is the GIRESD biannual election resolution.
So in your packet this evening, you have information from Grashit Isabella RESD. This is something that we participate in every two years where we need to appoint a board representative from our board to attend their meeting, which is actually also on June seventh. It does begin at 5:00 PM. It's at Whining Brook, so it is possible to attend their meeting and then get back for our meeting that starts at 6:30. They have two candidates running, Julie Pierce and Matthew Showalter. And so we basically just need to have the nomination from you all this evening to represent our board at their board meeting on June seventh. I think, Tim, you've done this before, and Sheila, I don't know if you have, no?
Okay.
And I'm willing to do it again if people would like me to put out. I just represent our vote, which is whatever we vote tonight is what I would say if we do.
Sorry, Tim, can you say that again? I couldn't hear you. Can you say it again?
Yeah, I'm sorry. So I, I'm willing to go down and represent the vote of the board at this meeting, which is a formality. So I just reflect what we vote tonight on the two candidates for the two seats. I go down there and say that Mount Pleasant approved the two candidates for the two seats.
Thank you.
So basically, if you all approve the resolution that's in your packet, then Tim would take that approval. Tim or whoever you appoint would take that approval to their meeting on June seventh.
Do we do an alternate?
Would anyone like to be the alternate in case Tim is unable to do that? I can. Is that Courtney?
Yeah.
Okay, so that would be Tim with Courtney as the alternate. Okay, is this a roll call vote?
I think it's a resolution. It's a resolution, it's a roll call vote.
Okay.
And before we go further, Courtney, if you want to be the first, that is fine by me. It's up to you.
I'll let you stick.
Okay.
I'll just be your fall guy if you need me. And if you have had the opportunity, there is both the education and letters of intent for both Julie Pierce and Matthew Showalter. That has been uploaded to our board drive to have a chance to look through those. So is there a motion then?
No move. Second.
And this is a roll call vote. Dana Cockens?
Yes.
Tim Oderkirk?
Yes.
Sheila Murphy?
Yep.
Jessica Jernigan?
Yes.
Courtney Stegman?
Yes.
Willene Pangle?
Yes.
Amy Bond?
Yes.
And that unanimously passes. All right. Next is the donations.
So the last item under new business this evening is a donation from Home Depot to McGuire Elementary. And they donated paint to be used to paint a mural in the hallway. The value is fifty dollars, and we're asking that you accept that donation this evening.
I move that we accept the donation with thanks to Home Depot.
I second.
Wonderful. So there is the motion. All that approve, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That passes. Thank you very much. That is a really wonderful thing to give the district. Next is the Extended COVID-19 Learning Plan.
So we're going to move into our learning plan presentation now. Can get that to work. I do have representatives from our administrative team with us this evening. Linda Boyd, Katie Ranky, Diane Falsada, and John Winkler will all be helping share the presentation. So as I move through the slides, if you all want to jump up whenever it's your part, that would be great. So we're going to go through some general basic information with you this evening. We're going to highlight for you our two-way communication report. Since this is the last report that we will give before the last day of school, we will also talk a little bit about some benchmark data. Although, like a lot of our reports this year, our data is somewhat incomplete right now, so we'll talk a little bit more about that. We're going to talk about plans for summer school, plans for summer professional learning for our staff, and then what we're seeing for the fall. I'll just, you know, just to begin with, I think that if the last three days haven't shown us that this landscape of our COVID world is changing all the time, I don't know what does. So every day, it's a new guidance, it's new directives, it's new mandates. And so we're trying to be adaptive and keep up and continue to keep safety, safety for our students and safety for our staff in the top of our mind. So having said that, I do feel like we really are making great progress. I feel like especially some of the recommendations that came out this weekend are steps to getting back to normal, right? So I think that's really positive. Positive for us again is that we have such a large portion of our staff that has been vaccinated. When I look at our numbers, that makes a huge difference with our staff members that have to quarantine. As you all know, vaccines are now open to anyone twelve and older. And individuals are able to schedule those appointments directly with the Central Michigan District Health Department. When I compare what we're experiencing in our county with my colleagues that live in more metropolitan counties in our state, it's a drastically different experience. So I know that our overall county numbers are rather low, but I feel like just the access that we have is really nice. I keep saying that I think that's a benefit of a smaller town that we have access. You know, we're maintaining our focus on our safety protocols and on the mental health and well-being of our students and of our staff. So this is a chart that I've made for you that I've updated at every board meeting. If you look at where we were one month ago versus where we are today, that's definitely the spike that we were experiencing, especially when you look at our student numbers and numbers in quarantine. If you remember, the biggest difference, if we back up to November sixteenth, that's when we made the decision to go online. And the biggest difference there was our staff in quarantine. Staff numbers in quarantine remain low. Although I do need to tell you that at our April nineteenth meeting, my numbers were inaccurate. At that time, I didn't believe that we had any staff members in quarantine. And I did learn, actually that evening, that we actually had five staff members across the district that were in quarantine. So I did adjust that on this table. I move to the next page for you. You can see this is where our positive cases are. Primarily, high school, middle school is where we're seeing still the biggest influx of cases. But these numbers are significantly better than where they were a month ago. So I work closely with Dr. Morris from the Central Michigan District Health Department. She will also tell you that community-wide, our numbers are headed in the right direction. So they're still higher at our lowest point, which was in February. We were at about a two-point-three percent positivity test rate. And last week, we were at eleven-point-four. So drastically better, still high. Just general information, you know, this return to school report is focused on the third trimester of the school year, began on March ninth, it ends June fourth. Twelve and a half days of school left at this point. Safety remains our top priority. Our COVID protocols are still strongly in pace, in place, and that's something that we believe is very important. We are following the CDC recommendations that masks are still required at all times for all grade levels. We do allow our classes to take mask breaks outside. Classrooms are disinfected every four hours or after a class transition at the secondary level. All of our buildings are deep cleaned on a regular basis and our post-plus protocols remain the same. And a key part here is this last statement where we're looking at our families to continue to be our partners to screen their children and to not send their children to school if they're sick. We really have worked on our communication with families. It has been constant and ongoing. Our COVID team is literally working seven days a week to contact families, to answer their questions. We do that mainly via email and phone call. We had, last month, we were toying around with a text messaging system, but we felt as though that wasn't as personal of a contact, so we've not been doing that. We understand that families are frustrated and we understand that there's been inconsistent messages. So we continue to collaborate with Central Michigan District Health Department to make sure we are getting consistent messages to our parents. So our reconfirmation report, this is a required report from this process. This is, this was established in the return to learn legislation, and it's meant to meet the requirements. This has three parts. One is our educational goals, to hold our progress reports by February first and the last day of school, which is June fourth, and then hold monthly reconfirmation meetings. So this is our monthly reconfirmation meeting. We're looking at data from Power School for four weeks. Teachers have until Wednesday of the next week to enter that data into the system. So I'll pull up our reconfirmation report. So this information basically tells when we were in session, where we reviewed it. This looks at the options our students have, grades K-five, six, eight, and nine, twelve. This evening, we'll document public comments, if there are any public comments regarding our plan. And then we go into our two-way communication. So we're looking at all students being a blend of our students that are one-hundred percent remote, which is students that are in the Oilers Online program, and our students that are not one-hundred percent remote, meaning those are the students that are face-to-face every day. Does that pull up right? So our first chart is for our DK-two buildings. Second chart is our third through fifth grade buildings. The third chart is Mount Pleasant Middle School. I apologize for that wonky formatting. If you remember, these, in previous reports, these numbers here in the third and fourth week had typically been lower, so this is a little bit of a switch there. Still working really hard to communicate. And then our ninth through twelfth grade. And what we typically have seen with these reports is that this fourth week does increase after the board meeting, when teachers have the opportunity to finish their data entry.
Jen, they haven't, I'm sorry, it doesn't look like they really increased for the weekend, the twenty-third, thirtieth, seventh?
Correct. It's not drastically different, right?
So they're only hitting sixty-five, sixty percent?
Of the students that are one-hundred percent remote. So remember, this is, the state clearly defines what is two-way communication. It's not just us sending out information, it's the student responding to the information that's being sent.
So obviously.
Participation is dropping off.
And we have about a third of our high schoolers that are remote, is that correct?
I don't think it's a third. I think it's, yeah, it's a little bit less than that.
Thank you.
Go back to. And just the athletic testing piece, you know, that's a newer piece for us. At our last board meeting, we were two weeks in. We adjusted our schedule so that we are testing high school athletes on Monday morning at 7:00 AM. We find that that's working a little bit better because they've had the weekend, so there aren't as many close contacts. And we're testing our middle school students on Wednesday afternoons. The problem is, middle school students don't drive, and so we have to have them at a time when their parents can get them there. So far to date, we, every antigen test, every positive antigen test, has also tested positive on a PCR. That is a part of our process where they go and take the PCR test within forty-eight hours of the antigen test. And this is a binding MDHHS order that now goes through May thirty-first. I'll turn things over to Linda to talk about our benchmark testing data.
So for our benchmark data, as you know, we use NWEA. We've used that system for years for our data. This year has been, of course, a little bit of a challenge because we have some students who are taking it remotely. We've tried to bring students in. We've really tried to do our due diligence to make sure that we can test as many students as possible. We always try to wait as long as we can in the spring to allow for as much classroom instruction as we can. And so when we look at these numbers, we are right in the middle of NWEA testing as we speak. So some of the data on the first slide shows you how many students have been tested. In math, sixteen kindergartners so far. And so we're still knee-deep in the middle of testing for the next couple of weeks here. We use forty percent as kind of a, right in the middle of the average range, as a target to kind of see how our students are doing. But it's very difficult to compare or make any trend data growth because we don't have any data to compare to for last, from last year because we weren't in session at all. And so we would have to go back to two thousand eighteen, two thousand nineteen to see if these scores are similar or different. We suspect that we would have some decline in scores due to the unique instruction of the last couple of years. The next slide is again just a percentage overall of students that have been tested so far. But this slide breaks it down by the required demographics, economically disadvantaged students, special education students, male, female, et cetera. So testing is going on right now. The middle school just started today. So on the previous side, when you see that zero students have been tested in grade six, seventh, eighth, that's because they just started today and their scores have not been uploaded. So we are actively in the end-of-year testing program right now. And we'll continue to analyze that data and see what, how this does compare to previous years. We've been doing NWEA for a while, so it will be really interesting to look for those trend data, look at those trends and see, you know, how, how much of an impact this unique two years has had on our students.
So the way the return to learn legislation reads, we have to present benchmark data before the last day of school. And this is our last board meeting before the last day of school. So we will present updated information to you, but we didn't want to miss this opportunity to be compliant with the return to learn legislation. So next, we'll move into summer programming, and I'll invite Diane and John, I think, are coming up to talk about summer programming in their buildings.
Okay, this is a great segue into talking about summer learning and looking at our scores and our data. Due to the Due to the loss of learning because of COVID over the last two years, we know that we're going to have to create some programs to address those, those drops in scores. So the MDE, the Michigan Department of Education, has a grant opportunity that Mount Pleasant Public Schools has applied for. The grant will give us $550 per student to plan their summer learning program. Some of the criteria of the grant is that you have to plan district-wide, so it doesn't have to be like elementary is eight weeks, but a combination of district plan eight weeks from start to finish. So eight weeks, 40 days, for eight full weeks. So Mount Pleasant's applied for that grant, and we're hoping that we would get the innovative grant, which is actually $100 more per student, or $650 per student, because we're going to be implementing some social-emotional learning into our summer school program. So I'm just going to be speaking to the K-8 program, and we're really focusing on tutoring and direct instruction, small group instruction. So students will be taught and supported by certified staff, and also, we're hiring peer professionals. We're going to be teaching math and reading, and then, of course, like I said, the social-emotional lessons. And for that, we will be tapping into our school counselors to do some remote type of lessons that we can pull. I did also put a little link that you can watch at your own. You don't have to look at it today, but we're going to be using some mind-yadi techniques, which is a lot like mindfulness and things like that. It's very appropriate for our DK-2 students. Also, we're going to be offering daily snacks, and the students will take sack lunches home. One of the things that isn't up there, but this grant will also allow us to provide busing to and from the program. Students who attend Peak will be able to just go to the program and then return to Peak. And balanced calendar, because our program starts, the elementary starts June 14th and runs through July 30th. We're still in balanced calendar, but those students still can go to the program. They will just be attending five weeks versus the six, so they can go right into balanced calendar to the program. In preparing for this and planning for this, we did survey our staff and our parents regarding summer school teaching and learning options, asking them what days of the week. Do they want a three-day program, a two-day program, a five-day program? What time of day do they prefer? Also, surveying teachers to see if we did plan the program big, if we would have staff willing to teach it. If you want, click to the next slide. We recently sent out flyers for our intensive program, and this is invitation-only, so we're looking at data. And at our PLCs, our professional learning community, as we meet, in those, we are actually picking our caseload and inviting specific students to come to this. One of the great things about this program, it's multi-tiered. So you can see that Tier 1 planned for all students. All students are going to walk out the door on or before the last day of school with a lot of free materials for the summer. The Scholastic workbooks, I mean, and the workbooks kind of has a negative connotation, but these books are bright and colorful, and they're actually transition books. So if you're a first grader, you'll get the first to second grade. So it's also just reviewing those skills over the summer that you've learned, and maybe stretching some of that throughout the year. We're also giving Scholastic books, so they'll have a variety of informational texts that they'll be able to take home and read, and narrative texts. I put a little picture up there. We're also giving markers, crayons, pencils, scissors. I know last year, when I was delivering some lunches to people, some parents would say, you know, we just, we don't have paper, or can you bring us back some scissors, or we're having trouble completing this packet because we don't have pencils. And so I think that these will be very great for our parents to have too, those tools and things at home. You can see there's number lines, whiteboards, white markers. They're just great little bags. Hopefully, they can actually carry them because we're going to be loaded down. Also, we're going to, at that Tier 1 level, individual buildings are going to try to incentivize those books. So I know Gators on the Go, they'll be checking in as they come to those programs to see, do you need help with any of this? Do you have what you need? Do you need more? And other schools maybe might have like an ice cream sundae party with the principal if you bring the workbook back. So we're trying to really make sure that they're going to engage in these Tier 1 goodie bags. Tier 2 is targeted, like I said, it's, and we're looking at data. We're looking at 20 to 30%, starting at 20% and below, and inviting those kids. But we're having to really make sure that if we don't get our 15 per grade level, that we dig deeper. So that would be, you know, getting kids that are at the 30th percentile. Anyone below the 40th percentile will be targeted for this. And again, you can see the intensive program is Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday, June 14th to the 30th. It's a six-week program. It's 18 days and limited to 15 per grade level. A tentative schedule for that, I put that up there. We're going to do literacy, give them a snack, brain break, math, and then the SLE, small groups. That's the social-emotional learning and dismissal, and again, they'll take the sack lunch with them. The tutoring program, Monday, Friday tutoring. So this program is limited to 15 students per school, five per grade level. Those numbers aren't like cut and stone, so if we have six in one and three in another, but it's going to be 15 of the best fit for these programs. The tutoring program is still going to be invite. Those students can come for the whole two hours. They can come Monday and Friday. They can come Mondays and not Fridays, but we want more of an open format to help students working on their own individual levels and what they're working on. We'll also be doing, so some small groups and computer-based program. We have some research-based Read Live and things like that, that students will be using. That, Monday, Friday, has one teacher and one para and a principal designee. The other programs, the intensive, is one teacher per grade level and one para for the school. So you could potentially have 45 kids in the program, three teachers, one para, and then the principal or principal designee. Okay, switch it. I thought you might ask a little bit how enrollment's going right now, so I added a slide. You can see Gannier pulling in vowels. We're still in the recruitment stage, sending out those flyers. And on the flyer, we did put, I would like more information, so in the process of calling parents back and making sure that they know we have busing, that we will supply meals, that we can get them to the daycare and back, and those are kind of the questions we're getting. But you can see in kindergarten, we have about 29 students district-wide. In first grade, 33, and second, 36. So the total enrollment right now, we have 98 students enrolled in the intensive summer school program, K-2, and we have 135 slots. We're struggling a little bit at the third, fifth, but they're working hard at that recruitment piece. And again, if you look at third, fourth, fifth grade, this is an intensive program. It's a four-week program, two hours a day. The schedule is similar to the elementary, only it's two hours a day. They're going to do some fun things like STEM, robotics, and all of that, including science and reading, and try to really make it something that kids look forward to coming to. So again, we have 90 spots for our third, fourth, and fifth, and currently, we have 24 students enrolled in that. We're going to work hard, though. Do you have any questions about the K-5 summer school programs?
I do have one. So if I understand right, the students that are invited in the Tier 2, it's the same students that would go Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday, and then they also come to the Monday, Friday, but that one's online. Is that?
No. So yes, that's a good question. To clarify, the intensive, Monday, Wednesday, Friday, three-and-a-half-hour program is a different group of kids. They're kids that need more time. The tutoring might be just below the 40th, 30th percentile.
Okay. And so that's why there's 45 students total, because there's those two different groups?
Yes, two different groups. And I didn't include the enrollment for the tutoring. We sent the intensive out first to kind of net up all of our intensive kids, and once we get them, we did send home the tutoring one, too. But if we have slots available, we can move kids up into the more intensive. Parents would prefer that. And even looking at, if we can't get enough in the tutoring, how can we use that time with the intensive kids and maybe spread it out over five days? But those are conversations that we still need to have with Jennifer and Linda. And moving forward, we're just keeping our options open to service as many kids as we can.
Thank you.
Is there a minimum number? So if you don't achieve many more students, are you still going to be able to deliver?
Right now, I feel like for the intensive K-2, we're good. I mean, we have enough to roll, but we're going to have to find more, and so that is a good question, and I could, I'm not sure I can answer that right now.
The way the state structured the funding is that we gave them our projected enrollment number. They will give us that funding. If we don't get that many students, we would pay back a certain portion of the funding. So I think we could still have the program with fewer students, but we know there's a need, and we want to try to get as many students as possible into the program.
So that does bring to my other question. So you mentioned that we might, do we have the funding guaranteed right now? And it's just the innovation grants that we don't quite know about yet, or do we not know?
We don't solidly know yet. Did you, I don't know if you've heard anything different. So basically, there was an application that we submitted, and all the guidance that we've been given is you will get this money, but we don't have that in writing today.
And I think, I know that we created the budget at the K-2 level to receive the 550, not the 650. So in case we don't get the higher amount for the, you know, the program that you augment a little bit, do something like robotics, or STEM, or social-emotional, we're going to be good even if we don't get that extra $100, but we do feel like it's, we bumped it up to get that extra money.
And so what if we don't have the enrollment, especially third to fifth grade, that's quite a bit lower right now? Can we, can teachers invite maybe students that are not 40% or below so that we can have as many kids participating, or is that something that goes against the grant?
Yeah, I feel like we can dig deeper and get more kids. I really do feel like the, like when we send out the invites, there is always a process, turnaround time. And I know we have to, you know, click along here and make some calls. I know we're in the process, and I'm sure Fancher and McGuire are in the process. I talked to Aaron, and they're going to be calling. So we might not be able to wait for those papers to come back. We're going to have to make that personal contact and really sell it, because it's going to be a great program.
But the short answer to your question is that the state did not set any criteria for the kind of student to enroll in the program. So we can set that, so we can invite as widely as we need to.
And so what if I'm a parent that has a child that doesn't qualify, but I really want them to go in this? Would, can a parent call the school or ask, is it a possibility? Or at this point, we're saying, no, it's invitation-only?
So they can, but we want to hold the spots for the students that need it the most. So what we're asking those parents to do is to let us know. We've started sort of a wait list, if you will. And then once we get closer to the start dates, when we know what our enrollment's like, we'll be able to determine if we have space for those students or not.
Thank you. I have one more, continuing, I'm sorry. How does that work with Peak? And so I know a lot of our families use our Peak services in the summer. Can it's something that works together, where they go to the intensive Tier 2 in the morning and then transition to a Peak program in the afternoon?
Yep. So we're used to working with Peak. We've had Title I summer schools, and I know high school has had, you know, like, summer schools. So I'm meeting with the Peak person next week, and I'm sure each principal will do that. So we look at the spaces and places in our school, and we say, these are the Peak places, these are the summer school spaces. And we actually give them a list of our kids that are going to summer school, so we can walk them back and forth to Peak. So it's pretty slick, actually. If you're a Peak person, you can ultimately not have to be bused anywhere. Your parents can drop you off. You can come to summer school, go back to Peak and get picked up.
I would imagine that would be a selling point for our parents as well, so that they can benefit.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Knowing how exhausting this year has been on staff and parents. Knowing how exhausting it's been on staff and parents this year, what's the response from staff? Is it going to be difficult to get staff to run this?
One of the things on the slide that I didn't mention is that the state is saying that it doesn't have to be one teacher to teach the whole program. So it has helped that we could split it up so that teachers can teach a week or two. The teachers that are teaching summer school are getting a bonus stipend on top of the amount of money per hour. So that's been a nice incentive to get staff to teach as well.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Let's move on and have Linda talk about the middle school, summer school programs, and we'll have John talk about the high school.
I guess, just one clarifying. Just to confirm, this is face-to-face, not online?
Yes, 100% face-to-face.
I'm going to chat a little bit about the middle school for Darby Weaver. The middle school program is going to be August 2nd through 6th and August 9th through 13th. Their times, times per day are just like the elementaries, 8:30 to 11:30. Last week, I was able to join a Zoom with Darby and Norma Bailey. Some of you may remember Norma. She's a retired CMU faculty, and her expertise is the middle level. I think Dana probably worked a little with Norma. CMU used to come in and do what we would call a transition camp with CMU students that were going into middle-level education. So Darby wanted to kind of pick Norma's brain about how can we engage these middle schoolers and make them want to come to summer school in the middle of August. So they shared some great ideas. They really want to work on some of those engaging things that will hook the kids. And so Norm was nice enough to share lots of the materials that help the kids not only do some academics, but also just get to know the building. Things like a neat locker song, if we were able to get the kids to understand how to unlock their lockers with a certain jingle, which is probably one of the biggest fears of many of our middle schoolers. So mixed in with some of just helping them get over some of their anxieties about middle school and getting the lay of the land, they will focus on language arts, math, and then, and some electives. And just like the elementaries, they will offer lunch when, or breakfast when they get there, and they'll be able to walk out every day with their lunch to head home. I can answer any questions, I think, but...
I have, just thinking about this. If they're, all right, so if you're at 3 through 5, are the current fifth graders going to stay in that program? Or are you considering them sixth graders and they're going to this program?
I think they want to try to include some of those transition activities. Darby has invited everyone with a link, but then, for their current students that they have middle school data on, they're also going to follow up with an invitation. So those transition years are kind of the tricky ones, and I think John's going to talk a little bit about how can we hook those eighth graders. We have a funny feeling that our eighth graders probably aren't going to be crazy about going back to the middle school for a summer school. But if we can get them involved in, they can't really recover credits yet because they haven't earned credits, but if they can do some skill-building recovery, then the high school would like to invite the freshmen to the high school. So kind of working on some of those transition opportunities so that some of the fifth graders from Fancher and McGuire could be a part of the transition to the middle school. Lots of pieces and parts.
Okay, so but basically, in, excuse me, basically, in the elementary school, you're going to keep them at the current level, because obviously, that's where they're going to be. But in August, if they're in fifth grade, you're going to give them the opportunity to go into the junior, or junior, middle school.
Yeah, that's my understanding, yes.
Okay.
Thank you.
So we'll go ahead and move on to the summer, the high school credit recovery program.
Thanks for having me. Our focus at the high school is always on credit recovery, because that's what kind of drives the building a little bit. We anticipate we're probably going to have a few more students in our summer school than normal because of credit loss last spring, and then also during our hybrid, we saw a slight increase in the number of failures that we had. So so far, we've gotten more kids signed up. Usually, in the high school, it's towards the end when they start to realize what happened, you know, the ones that they didn't pass during third trimester. Ours, like I said, is credit recovery towards graduation. They have to, you know, fulfill the Michigan Merit curriculum, and so we start to plug them into classes that can let them earn back the credits. And so we start to plug them into classes that can let them earn back the credits that they had lost at some point. The way we run our summer school is we have our own teachers teach it. It's through an Odysseyware program, and Dana, I'll answer your question right now. We've had great success getting our teachers to come. And we try to, some of the harder subjects are usually, you know, ELA and math, and so we try to bring in teachers from those areas. So even though they're working on Odysseyware, which allows them to not only have the four hours per day during the summer school, but then they can also go home and work on that at any time and come back the next day, and even work on it on their off days in the weekends that they can work on it, but yet still have access to one of our core subject teachers during the summer school time. The way we run ours, we run two sessions. In June, two weeks after school starts, we run a three-day-a-week, three-week session, Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday. And then in July, we come back after the fourth, and we run a four-week session, two days a week on Tuesdays and Thursdays. And no matter which session you're in, we run it from eight to noon, right at the high school here, and so on. The other question you had was about transition students who are coming over. The last couple of years, we've invited the eighth graders over. It works out kind of nice because even though they're not in credit recovery, they're in skill recovery. And so we put them into a plan. There's usually time there to, I mean, one, they're working with their future high school teachers, which is kind of nice. And secondly, they can get to see the building, get to see the things. We usually try to work in a day where at least they take a tour of the building. So especially for some of our at-risk students, it's an awesome way to kind of have a comfort level when they come in the fall. And so that'll be for the eighth-grade students. Altogether, each of the sessions, like I said, generally, they're working in Odysseyware and earning half credits for different classes. Altogether, in either session, it totals 32 hours total time in the classroom. But then there's obviously, we figure it's about 56 hours to earn that half credit, and so there's going to have to be some time outside of it also. Any questions?
Just have a comment. Thank you, and Diane, for all your work. This is extra work, and I, I think it's really going to benefit our students a bunch. So thank you very much.
I sure hope so.
I do have a short question, John. How big of an enrollment do you expect for the summer, roughly? Do you have an idea, or is it too early to say?
Between the, I mean, between the two sessions, you know, we, we could hit 100 this year. We're, we're waiting to see how, you know, it goes and so on. Generally, there's a group that, two weeks after, we, you know, hit the ones right away, go with that. And then a lot of them rejoin in July. There's some that can't make it in June, so then they come in July. So it's kind of a split session. Some kids, though, will be in both, trying to re-earn credits and so on. This year, like I said, we anticipate a little bigger number than what we've had in the past just because circumstances.
Thank you.
So how are you inviting? So for example, earlier, we saw the 60% contact rate for the Oilers online. So there's a lot of students that are not making credit. What is your process to let them know that they're not making credits and that this is an opportunity?
Generally, the counselors have started working with them. Though some of the ones that we have in school, administration has started to work with them. And so the failure rate actually is not that low in that class. That's our two-way communication. So there's a lot of kids that'll sometimes turn in assignments and get the things, they just don't carry on the, to be considered, two-way communication is, you know, is different than just one-way communication that we're really good at, and we need the other partner to help us sometimes on that, so. But we've already started sending out letters to some of the ones that we knew had already fallen below what we'd call the normal credit level. And then we'll get on this last ones here as we find out more about. Generally, it's tough for us because the end of the trimester, kids are creatures of habit, and they turn in a lot of stuff at the end. And so we usually take anybody who's kind of below that 50% level and start working on those. Counselors have been working, because we had last spring and also the hybrid plan this fall, we've started working on that a little bit earlier because it's been a little bit easier there.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, John. So we'll move on to talk about the professional learning that we have planned for the summer, and ask Katie to join us to update us there. Thank you, Katie.
Things change in our community. If we need to react to that, we will. But our primary mode of instruction will be face-to-face, five days a week, full-time, full-days, back to quote-unquote "normal" for next fall. To wrap up the information, as I mentioned when we first started, we know that there were new guidelines that were released through an epidemic order on Friday that goes into effect from Saturday, May 15th through May 31st. It is an extension of the previous order. It included updated guidance for athletics. It focused on facilities indoor and outdoor, and mask requirements. There's also been new guidance released from the CDC regarding masks. Face masks now must be worn at all time for anyone who is not vaccinated. People who are fully vaccinated do not have to wear face masks. But as of today, both the CDC and the Central Michigan District Health Department still recommend that all students and staff in school wear face masks at all time. So Mount Pleasant Public Schools will continue to work closely with those guiding agencies as we have all the way through.
What are they using for the science to justify that?
I can send you the information that I have from the CDC that backs that up. As we continue to look at our future work, we know that safety continues to be our top priority with all of our COVID protocols that have served us well this year. We're planning for our year-end activities that we've talked about a couple of different times. Our spring extracurricular activities that are going strong. And then I did want to mention our summer food service program, so I was glad someone brought that up. We will continue to feed all Mount Pleasant Public School students in summer school, and all of our Peak students will also receive free lunch all summer. And then like Linda mentioned, we'll do the weekly meal distribution for a full week of meals, breakfasts and lunches at Mount Pleasant High School throughout the summer. So we won't miss a beat with that. So we have lots of team members here to answer your questions, and then we can move to the next step of the report.
I do have a question. I know we have 70-ish percent teachers vaccinated. Are we keeping any data on students?
So we're not permitted to ask that question, right? But with the way the quarantine guidelines work, if a student or staff member is fully vaccinated and they're two weeks past that, they don't have to quarantine. So in order to show us that, they have to show us proof of their vaccination card. So it's on a case-by-case basis. We do have, I would say, we've probably maybe 10 to 15 students that we've talked to about being quarantined that have been able to produce their vaccine cards. So that's not a, you know, good sample at all because it's not going out to everyone. But in those situations, we've been able to find that out.
I do have a question regarding our online Oilers program. So you mentioned next fall, the plan is a return to normal. Do we plan on having any online options for the 25% of the answers that we received? I recognize we had not a very high, we're not as high as we'd hoped response rate. Or are we saying at that point, we cannot offer this?
So I think right now, it's my favorite answer that it all depends, right? I mean, I think it depends on where the need is. We know from what we've experienced this year that it's very challenging for our teachers. We also know that it makes it very difficult to staff our building. So what we don't want to do is we don't want to go to a third-party vendor for an online program. But at the same time, we do recognize that our staff resources are limited. We've been in conversations with the RASD where we know that it's a real possibility that M.D. could say, "You must," or "You have to." And so we're prepared for that. So I think right now, it's really still just a wait-and-see approach. I appreciate that our plans moving forward are solid and in place because then we'll have something to adjust if we need to. But the hard part too is to know when to ask the questions. So we wanted to start gathering data today, but so much changes so quickly that it's challenging to know. So I don't know, Linda, if you have more thoughts on that?
No, I think that's a good summary. I mean, we're trying to stay on top of it and ahead of it, but it changes quickly daily.
Because I'm guessing what we want to avoid is to have family leave our district because they don't have that answer.
Right.
Especially for those that know they have kids that have compromised immune system. No, until kids are vaccinated, they won't. And so I'm asking mostly for families like that.
So we've talked about that quite a bit with other schools in the RASD. And I was a bit surprised by the thought process from some of our neighboring districts that they weren't going to offer that. I still think we're very open to doing that, and we certainly want to meet the needs of our families. We don't want to lose families.
Yeah.
The question is how? And what are we capable of doing and what are we capable of doing well, right? Because I think this year, we've put a lot of effort in to trying to run a strong Oilers online program. And so if we need to continue that, how can we continue that at the level where we expect and our families expect?
Right.
Thank you.
Do other board members have questions?
I have one more. Is there any discussion with the Health Department of either encouraging vaccines for kids when it is available, or is that something that's not discussed at this point?
No, the Health Department has very much encouraged us to encourage vaccination. We did host one vaccination clinic. They send us information regularly that's shared out with families. So they're very much encouraging us to encourage that conversation.
So is there anything we can do to continue that encouragement, I guess, as a board that we could support their effort?
I mean, I try to send out all the information to our families that I get from the Health Department so that they know what is out there and what's available.
I was gonna say, I don't think that's the school's, should be the school's position to push the vaccine on people. I mean, the information's out there for those who want it. I don't think that it should be in any way, shape or form our decision because technically, this is not an approved, it's still experimental. And I think it should be a personal decision and not the school board shouldn't be pushing it either way for or against.
Do any other board members have any questions? So the next section then, I don't know, did we have folks sign in for public comment regarding the return to school plan? Okay. So the next section for our board agenda is the public comment specifically regarding the return to school plan. So for our folks that are here this evening, we do have two sections of public comment. This section is specifically in regards to the plan that our team has just reviewed. And then we'll close that section, and then we'll move into general public comment about any agenda or non-agenda item. So I guess at this point, we would ask for any public comment regarding specifically the return to school plan. Seeing them, then we'll close this section of the agenda, and I'll turn it back to you, Madam President.
So next is the citizens' request to address the board on any agenda or non-agenda item. Did you have them sign in? Okay. To socially distance, what we are going to do is, I will call you up. Once it is your turn, please come up to the microphone. And as always, you will have three to five minutes to address the board. And we will give you the warning when that time is up. And just as a reminder again, this is not a time that the board will respond. This is a time for you just to address the board. So first up, we have Jenny Cook.
My name is Jenny Cook. I have worked in healthcare for 25 years. And to clarify with the board, the decisions that the board makes is on the behalf of the students and in their best interest. Is that right? Right? And so, being that I've worked in surgical settings, and I know the purpose of wearing a mask, and the situation in that is to protect the patient from a bacterial infection, not necessarily to prevent them from getting a virus. When wearing a mask in that setting, there is a sterile field whereby the mask, if the mask is touched, or otherwise, then you have contaminated the mask, contaminated your fingers, and then you have to change everything. And the sterile field is no longer sterile. So just think about that when you touch your mask every time. And we do not live in a sterile environment, nor should we. Essentially, the only thing a mask does is provide a false sense of security to those who feel they need that. Wearing a mask is not in the best interest of students, and it's sad that our schools have not stood up for our children. Thank you.
Next is Dawn Betha.
My name is Dawn Betha. I'm a resident of Mount Pleasant. I am extremely disappointed in how the schools have been forcing children to wear masks and the unnecessary testing and quarantining that has been done. This is child abuse. From the very beginning, we were told that children are not susceptible to this virus, that they had such mild symptoms, they would not spread the virus because they would not be coughing and sneezing due to the mild symptoms. The CDC recommended last summer that schools should be open. The draconian safety measures that have been taken are totally ridiculous. Masks create more health issues than they could possibly mitigate. Acne, asthma attacks, anxiety, headaches, dental decay, fainting, bronchitis, strep throat, and the list goes on. A mask cannot stop something as small as a virus. Plus, the constant touching of the mask is contaminating it. The latest rules that were given for the two- to four-year-olds wearing a mask, they were told that if the child touches the mask, it must be removed, the child must have their hands washed, and a clean, new mask must be put on. If it is mandatory for a two- to four-year-old, then it should be for all of us. So if you touch your mask once, you are supposed to take it off and put on a clean one. Testing has been extremely unreliable because they set the PCR test cycles at 40 to 45 cycles. That will pick up any kind of anything. You can make that test say anything you want when you ramp it up to 40 to 45. It should only be at 25 or lower. The CDC has had to admit that asymptomatic spread is not happening. Plus, if you test one day, who's to say that you could not go out and catch the virus within an hour of that test? Testing seems to be only to drive up the number of cases. Quarantining healthy children and forcing them to stay home has not been proven to stop anyone from contracting this virus. There is no evidence that quarantining children has made any difference in the spread. And why are only children being quarantined? Why not health workers, police, grocery clerks, et cetera? We seem to be only quarantining the healthy, when we should be only quarantining the sick. None of these rules, or regulations, or mandates, or whatever it is that you want to call them, make any sense. That's one of the things that I find missing in every level of our elected officials, and you are elected officials, is common sense.
Thank you, Bree Moggenberg.
Good evening. First and foremost, on May 5th, 2021, I sent a correspondence, and I have not heard a reply from any of you. A piece of that correspondence had requested a copy of your oath to office. I want to remind each of you that if you are here, you have taken an oath to office. You are a public servant. That means that you are elected, and your job is to serve the taxpayers, and not the government, and not an agency of the government. Audience, if you agree with that, will you please stand up and let me know that you agree? Thank you. You are being called upon now to stop the concurrence, to violate laws, and enforce guidelines that are robbing our children from a healthy, fair, and excellent education. Your job is to empower them. You are being asked to take action against agencies that inhibit, violate, and discriminate against our children because a mask is inhibiting. Close-contact quarantine does violate our children. Look at your numbers, I just laughed at them. And it is discriminating to hold unvaccinated children to mandates and not their counterparts that have been injected with a non-FDA-approved and still undergoing trials, emergency-use, authorized vaccine. Do you all understand what that means? And just because the agency says you should do it, does not mean you need to agree with them. You can stand up against this. Audience, if you agree, will you please tell me you agree? If you agree to support this board to stand up against these mandates, will you let them know you agree? The Mount Pleasant Public School Board was sent a notice to cure in regards to a lawsuit, M. I'm sorry, 21-0000-MZ. Currently, I am suing Governor Whitmer and M.D.HHS. And one of those violations is in regards to the revised school code. You were sent that information, the correspondence which I had spoke upon that I did not receive a response to. In regards to this law, I believe, has been violated, the one that states all of the following practices are prohibited for school personnel in public schools of this state under all circumstances, including emergency situations, any restraint that negatively impacts breathing. Audience, I believe a face covering does indeed negatively impact breathing. Do you agree? It's time to wake up. Claire Schools just did. I heard some of everybody call him rogue. Do you know what? I think he's not. I do not think he's rogue. I think he actually stood up and did his job in public service to the taxpayers and the students. If you agree with Claire Schools stopping the enforcement of close-contact quarantine that numbers show are not necessary, would you please let the board know that you agree with Claire Schools? I'll tell you right now, Claire Schools is looking like a beautiful place for my students to go next year. It's time to wake up. So let me be clear. There is a difference between a law and between a guideline. And I am thoroughly disgusted that our board continues to operate based on guidelines from the CDC or whomever else and their recommendations that bounce all over. You took an oath, an oath. Do you understand what that means? You are a public servant, and it is your job to uphold the laws and the Constitution, not for the agencies, but for the people. At this time, as a public servant, all of you, I remind each board member that you may resign at any moment. For members on the board following public comments, may you each individually answer your support or disapproval of number one, the masking mandate; number two, the non-ordered current close-contact quarantine policy; and number three, the discrimination of an emergency-use, authorized, vaccinated versus non-vaccinated student guideline. On this day of May 17th, 2021, I, Bree Moggenberg, am giving this school board of Isabella County, Michigan, my notice of intent to litigate and I am obligated to include board members in their individual capacity that choose to continue to violate their oath of office. I am not waiting until next year. I am going to ask for a difference to be made now. Again, you are a public servant. If you agree with that, please let me know you agree. Thank you.
Next is Stacy Pratt.
My name is Stacy Pratt, and I'm totally happy to give my minutes to Bree Moggenberg because I commend her for everything that she does. Good job, Bree. Just a brief little, we know that wearing a mask outside of our healthcare facilities of... Well, should've brought my glasses. If any protection from infection, public health authorities define a significant exposure to COVID-19 as a face-to-face contact within six feet with a patient with symptomatic COVID-19 that is sustained for at least a few minutes, and some say more than 30 minutes, or even 10 minutes to 30 minutes. The chance of catching COVID-19 from a passing interaction in a public space is therefore minimal. In many cases, the desire for widespread masking is reflective action to anxiety over the pandemic. I have made numerous telephone calls to schools in the area that... The House Bill 603-2 addresses who gets to be quarantined and who doesn't. Kids shouldn't have any different standards than public healthcare workers because this is an airborne virus. It doesn't matter if you are in there for 10 minutes or 30 minutes. If you're breathing the same air as everybody else, you're susceptible to it. We do it every single day, kids alike. They're not at risk. And I think that the school board could be perfectly in their rights to step outside of the box, like the Claire guy did, to, you know, take a stand instead of everybody that I've spoke to, take the safe route, and say, "Well, our hands are tied, our hands are tied." Your hands are not tied. You have the ability to do it, just like the other guy did. And I would appreciate it if people would take more consideration for kids' health and safety in the mask regard, and put as much time and effort into that as the guy that talked about redecorating the schools. Because that seemed to be pretty important. Thank you.
Next, Laura Gorle. Laura Gorle.
Thank you for your dedication to our community, all of you on the board. And I do understand that none of the work that you've been doing ever, but in the last year in particular, is easy. I totally get that. And given the recent events as they relate to Gannyard Elementary and the topic of race and racism, it just kind of felt like it was important for me to share with all of you in this way what motivates me as an educator in 2021, different than how it was in 1986 when I started. I'm the youngest of five children that I grew up in a low-income family in a suburb of Detroit. And thinking of myself as a privileged person was really not in my realm of consciousness. But for some reason, and I really don't know why, four years ago, I read a book that changed my life. It was Debbie Irving's book called Waking Up White. And I really have just never been the same. Debbie, her experience was that she was a kid from a family of five, just like me. And she was an educator, just like me. She did not see herself as white or privileged, just like me. And all of those coincidences kind of rocked me deeply. Debbie was a good woman who loved kids, and she just wanted to help people, just like me. And as Debbie unpacked her own racial illiteracy throughout the course of the book, for all who are reading to witness, I recognized myself over and over again. And I knew that I had to learn more about myself and my whiteness, and how I was showing up in my life as an unintentional racist in my community and in my job. And not one part of looking at that has been easy or comfortable for me. Four years ago, I went to the Facing Race Conference in Detroit to meet Debbie Irving. And since then, I've been to many, many workshops, seminars, conferences, related to having difficult conversations as they relate to race and racism. And I really suppose the most important thing that the last four years of my own self-study as a lifelong learner have taught me is that I'm white in a culture that was intentionally designed to privilege people that are white. And without that realization, I was actually causing harm. So while my intentions, I feel, have always been really noble, the impact of my thinking and my actions has really been harmful. And opening to that reality, while difficult for me, has allowed me to begin to notice the microaggressions that I make, and I can take responsibility for them. It's kind of setting me free in a way that's really been exciting. In addition, though, I continue to be trauma-informed as part of my professional responsibility as a mental health therapist. My most influential mentor in terms of this race and trauma intersection is Resma Menakem. Resma wrote a national bestseller called My Grandmother's Hands: Racialized Trauma and the Pathway to Mending Our Hearts and Bodies. And it's really been a critical book in my quest to heal from a cultural paradigm steeped in denial of the brutality of its racist past. As a school counselor devoted to doing what I can do to help the children that I am responsible to, I must acknowledge how racism and trauma intersect. I can't talk about racism without beginning with my own. As part of my ongoing work, I continue to be actively involved in white accountability spaces, places where you speak and listen to white people, black people, indigenous people, people of color, as we unpack our colonized experiences.
It's been five minutes.
Can I finish my statement? I'm continuing not to be afraid of my racism. It shows up daily in me, and I'm trying to unpack it. I'm interested in helping in any way I can to liberate all of us. Conversations about race and racism will continue to knock on our door and ask us to listen. Thank you for supporting me all of these years as I have been trying to practice my anti-racism skillset, still working. And I would welcome the opportunity to walk with you on your journey of discovery and education as you have supported me in mine. Thank you.
Next is Elizabeth Hudson.
Thank you for your service and for all you do for our students. I'm here on behalf of the Mount Pleasant, the Isabella County HRC. And I just wanted to offer you the opportunity to work with us as you walk through a very challenging time. The HRC is here to support you. We can provide training and we can provide whatever you need. We are here as a human rights organization, and we are here to support you. And I just wanted to remind you that we are here, and as a community organization, we are here for you. So just remember that we are here and we support you.
Your next is Kelly Fountain.
Hello, I'm Kelly Fountain. I live in Mount Pleasant. You've heard the data that masks and constant testing of children cause undue stress and anxiety on them. Is it going to be the new normal for our kids to be tested all the time? And if so, who's going to be paying for that after a while? Nobody wants this, and it's traumatic for them. If kids get vaccinated, how many more boosters will the kids get? Who will be there if something medically goes wrong? It's on the parents to pay that if something goes wrong. And for somebody to mandate a vaccination for a kid and the parents have to pay for all the problems afterwards, that's, um, that's not a good thing to have because a lot of parents are struggling. So who will be there when something medically goes wrong? That's what I said. It's on parents to pay. This is a parent's job and not to provide the medical for their children in what's best interest of how they want their kids to be raised and not the government. Is the constant mask mandate so that no one will be singled out or segregated out as vaxxed or not vaxxed? That way, nobody can tell the difference. Also, I would like to know how many vaccinated kids came down with the COVID after being vaccinated. I don't know how many kids you have that are vaccinated right now, but it'd be interesting to find out how many kids came down with the COVID after they were vaccinated. That's kind of, I would like to know on that. And thanks.
So that's now the end of my list. Was there anyone that would like to address the board that did not sign in? Can you please state your name and your city of residence?
Hi, I'm Tara Leonard, and what was the other thing?
Your city of residence.
Oh, I live in Mount Pleasant, thank you. I just wanted to come up. I didn't write anything, or I've just been kind of thinking as we're sitting here together. It seems like a lot of people on the board think in the same direction. And so maybe just a little bit of input from a parent and then to see a face that it might help because maybe you think this is what everybody wants, but there are different opinions as well. I don't think that it's best to, for, you know, a lot of teachers and a lot of counselors pressuring children to get vaccines, especially when it's the parent's decision, not the child's decision. So I would really, really beg you not to force that onto the children. It makes for a lot of stress that they're already under, going through all of this, trying to navigate. I'm also here as, I guess, the only stepparent that wanted to come to talk about graduation. My stepson is graduating this year, and only two tickets are allowed. I'm sorry, I'm not going to get emotional, but obviously his mom and dad are going to be the ones that go. And I have been the one, he lives with us full-time, my husband and I, and his mom lives two hours away, and his dad, my husband, works in Lansing. And so I have been the one to bring him to school every day. I've been the one to pick him up every day. He can drive now, obviously, because he's senior. But I've been the one that has went to all of the awards. I've been the one that rushed. I have two other high schoolers from, you know, Pullen and then making that mad dash to Mary McGuire to take pictures of the Halloween parades. And I've been at all of the games and all of the practices up until parents don't go anymore. And I have been the one to see him through that. And now I can't, I'm not invited to come watch him walk and graduate and close this chapter of his life. And I understand that the school board is exhausted, as we've heard, and parents are exhausted, and everybody just wants to get this over with, is what I've heard. But the thing is, next year, the staff and the school board will have another graduation. But my stepson will not have another graduation. This is it, and I can't be there. And so I was hoping, just like some of these other guidelines, when you're taking into consideration, everybody, if there are just recommendations that we should not go with the strictest or the harshest, harshest thing that's, you know, that we could go forward with, like the prom, why do we have to do testing? I know that that's not required, or I don't think that that's required. The cohorts with the six people, that's, I don't believe that's required. Graduation with only two tickets. I understand that our stadium isn't large, but maybe thinking outside the box and maybe holding it at CMU. I think if, even if we had to travel to Lansing or Grand Rapids, I think that families would like to do that together because it seems like these things that are being put in place are just separating families and not bonding families. And so I really hope that you can take that into consideration with these choices that you're making, is that it's causing more segregation. It's not causing a sense of community or a sense of family. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Annette Richards Mendez, and I live here in Mount Pleasant. And so I just wanted to recap a few things and add a few other things that weren't mentioned already about the mask. So in June 5th, 2020, the World Health Organization reported that there was no direct evidence that supported universal face masking of healthy individuals as an effective intervention against respiratory illness. And then, um, let's see, then the WHO, just like Fauci, practically overnight flipped its narrative. And in October 20 of 2020, the WHO is urging people to wear masks to help save lives. And then even OSHA, their standards in workplaces is that you get fitted, and if you're, you know, working, you get more breaks because they know that you cannot breathe. And so even just based on that, it's just amazing that we think that putting masks on children are okay. It's physiologically, it's psychologically, and it's developmentally damaging. Even, you know, me being in here, like, I can't even tell who's talking. You know, it's not really a face-to-face interaction anymore. There's no, you know, smiling, all of that, that we're social beings. And it's, it's just crazy to me that because we've been looking at social media and all's, you know, we hear is you need to do this to save lives. You know, you can no longer hug your grandmother until you take the experimental vaccine. And all's I'm hearing is it's safe and effective, it's safe and effective. It doesn't even make sense. How can something that hasn't been proven been safe and effective? But because we're hearing it so often, we are going against what we knew from the beginning. Otherwise, we would have been wearing masks for years on end, for hundreds of years, thinking that it's okay because it's preventing viruses that have always been around. And if you know anything about the immune system, like, you have to, you know, you can't be in a sterile environment, your, you know, your immune system is going to get weaker, your cells aren't getting oxygen. And when your cells don't get oxygen, then you're damaging your whole body system, and it's just getting worse from there. And then getting a shot and saying, oh, I'm okay. Well, how do you know if you're okay? What's going to happen come the fall that the people that got the shot, you're just going to keep on having to get the shot? That's the whole goal for them. They're just going to keep on making money off from you. You know, you're a consumer for life. And, and so, yeah, and I get you've been dealing with this for a while, and you've been brainwashed to believe that this is okay, and everybody thinks the other person is brainwashed. But you have to look at the studies. You can no longer, in this world, take something like, oh, it's safe and effective. Well, let's, let's look it up. Let's see a study. Why doesn't Fauci talk about any of the studies? He just says the real science. Well, show us a study, not a graph, and, you know, saying, oh, all the COVID beds were filled. Oh, there was only three beds? Like, they're not giving you any detail. They're just trying to, you know, get you to do what they want you to do. Why wasn't there a discussion about any of this? If this was a true pandemic, something that we haven't dealt with, why aren't we hearing more sides? You know, why is it only one-sided all the time? Why wouldn't we want to hear all the evidence and all the thousands of other virologists, individuals that have, you know, been working for 20 years that know all about this that we do not know? Why aren't we listening to them? Why are we listening to only those that are making money off from this? Because on the face of it, where you're looking at the people that have everything to gain by getting you to buy into this, and then you're saying that, oh, these people are wrong,
You've had five minutes, please wrap up your comments.
but they have everything to lose, even on the face of it, it just seems crazy that you would just go, you know, based on profits. Thank you.
Is there anyone else that would like to address the board at this time? Is there anyone else? Okay, not seeing any. Next is the Board of Education discussion. This is an opportunity for any board member to discuss any issues or concerns that they might have.
Yeah, um, I got three things. First and foremost, I have had a lot of people complaining about not being able to get tickets to the graduation. Is there any possibility that they could go and use Kelly Short Stadium as opposed to ours so that we could get more people in there?
I can revisit that again. I, we originally were booked in McGurk Arena. CMU told us we could not hold our event in McGurk Arena. So I then met with a group of student senators and our class advisors and asked them if they would prefer to have the graduation ceremony in Kelly Short Stadium or in Community Memorial Stadium. They picked Community Memorial Stadium because it is their home meaningful to them. So I can certainly look at what we might be able to do to increase capacity. I think it is important to remember that we've always had limits on tickets at graduation when we've hosted it here. So we had one year, uh, two years ago, we were able to do it at McGurk Arena, but prior to that, for eight to 10 years, we had it here in our own gym, and students were limited to tickets. They had four tickets, so it was more, but it's still been a limit. So I can certainly revisit all these decisions. At this point, I don't know if CMU could pull something off for us in a few weeks, but I can look at our capacity here.
Well, I think we should have, you know, asked the parents because they're the ones that are attending even more so. And I think that that should have been, you know, again, that the thing I'm getting time and time again from different people is that the parents aren't being consulted or what they want is not being taken into consideration. The next thing is I would like the Health Department to start providing some of the data that they're using to make these decisions. I've been doing a lot of research on this as well. I'm not saying they're right or wrong. I would just like to see the data that they're using. And every time I call or ask for it, it's, that's the science. I don't get any studies. I don't get any information from them. I'm not saying that they're not trying to do their best. I'd just like to know what information they are using. The third thing is we got the letter from the gentleman who was very concerned that critical race theory is being taught in our schools, which the book under Mr. Kendy wrote is very much in the critical race theory. And Laura also talked to it. This is a very, very controversial subject, and I don't think that this is, I've asked you before if it was being taught, and I was told no. Obviously, it is in the curriculum at some point. I'm not saying it needs to come out, but I'm, I'd like to know how it's being taught and what venue it's being taught, and is the opposing point of view being taught. This is very, very controversial. I've heard, I've read some, some of the books. I also have been listening to a lot of people on both sides of it. And I just think that this is a really very, when you teach a theory that says skin color is everything, that's very dangerous. And I think as a board, we need to address it. We need to see how it's being taught. We need to see, um, if both, because again, this is a theory. So are we teaching critical thinking skills? Are you questioning this theory on both sides? I am not one to ban any idea or thought, but I think we need to critically think. And if we're teaching this in a ninth grade class, which I would really like to know what, what class this book was being taught in. And, you know, it may be perfectly reasonable, it may be, but I'd like to know. Because I don't think that this should just be being taught or presented as truth because it's not necessarily. It's a theory. And I think it needs to be taken very, very seriously. There's lots of people who are talking about it. There's people losing their jobs over it. There's, um, there's organizations, you know, who are trying to combat it or the way it's being prepared. So I would like more information on that. And I would really think that if you're going to go down that road, we need to have parent input as well as administration, as well as teachers, as well as board members.
Sheila?
Um, something I have to say about that. You mentioned that there should be another side being heard. How many hundreds of years have we only heard one side? And that's white American history.
Okay, because there are many, many voices on this. John McWhorter, Coleman Hughes, Brittany King, Paul Rossi, Jody Shaw, Amy Chua, these are all people who have, quite a few of them are people of color, who have opposing views, who think that critical race theory, the way it's being taught, is not correct. who think that critical race theory, the way it's being taught, is not correct, and is not the way you deal with racism. I'm not saying we don't have racism in our culture. I am saying that it is questionable whether it's systemic, or whether we should judge somebody simply on the color of their skin. Again, you're looking at me and telling me I'm wrong, and we're not having a discussion.
I'm sorry, what?
You look at me and you shake your head at me, because you've already made that decision. And yet, there's just a ton of information out there. I'm not saying that you're wrong. I'm just saying we need to critically think about it. We need to, and to issue this at that young of an age without critical thinking is dangerous.
If we do look at the curriculum...
I can't hear you.
If, when we look at the curriculum from...
I still can't hear you. I'm sorry.
From kindergarten up, if we look at the list of authors of what are, what the kids are learning, it is 92, I want to say 99% white authors through the board. So I think if we look at this, we might want to look at an audit, where we actually look, and maybe an independent audit, that's someone that is knowledgeable, that, you know, actually can look at what we do and tell us where we need help, what we can do to improve. And I think at this point, we probably want to do something like this, that is more independent and from, you know, people that actually are knowledgeable on this topic. And I think our social, social studies curriculum review is coming up, and so we could start there, and actually look critically what it is, what books, what authors, at what age, and do something. And because I, you know, if we're going to look at one, let's look at them all across the board. And because I think there's some things that we are teaching, or some books that are being presented to some kids at a very young age, that are questionable, regardless of...
I agree. I think there is a plethora of black literature or black history that we haven't taught and should be teaching, tremendous amounts. I have been reading some in the last three or four years. I never knew, and would be of great benefit. But to teach our kids that the color of our skin is more important than anything, it's not any more important than the color of our eyes, or the color of our hair, or...
I'm not sure that's a fair representation of what critical race theory is. I think you're oversimplifying a bit. I would like to...
In the mic.
I think that that is not a fair representation of what critical race theory is. I think it's a bit of an oversimplification. I would like to say, I would like to second, not officially second, but second what Weleen said. I'd be delighted for us to have a more open and more, I guess, regular, agendized conversation, I don't know if agendized is the right word either, but ongoing, formal conversations about cultural literacy, about, or about cultural competency, about racial literacy. I'd be more than happy to have it.
And let's use some experts that do this or live it.
We have a resource here this evening who is offering to help us. I feel like we have, and at the university, we have lots of people who would like to help us with this, many of whom have already spoken to us.
Is there anything else the board would like to address?
Well, maybe I can answer Sheila's question. I can send you all kinds of science studies, if you'd like.
Oh, I have been doing research on it. I've been reading some of the books, but I've also been looking at the other side. I've been listening to people, what they like about it, what they don't like about it. There have been some, Coleman Hughes has done some...
I mean, from a science perspective, you know, what we're doing, what the CDC is telling us to do...
About science?
Yeah, I'm talking about the science of the CDC.
I really can't hear very well.
I know. But I can, I'll be happy to share.
Well, I'd like to know what they're basing it on, because I've been doing a lot of research as well. And the CDC seems to be about six to nine months behind what a lot of the studies are showing already. And I've been quite concerned with their, they're not showing the treatment, that the only thing they're telling us about is you have to get a vaccine, and they're not discussing the treatment options. Also, they're not explaining, the vaccine isn't being explained in, in terms of cost-benefit. It's more just get vaccinated, so we don't have to worry about it. And there is cost and benefits to it. And I think we need to be more informed.
I'd appreciate it if you'd share that.
Yep, I can do that.
So there was some questions regarding the Ganyard situation just at this time. A quick update in that we are still undergoing a third-party investigation that is not concluded, and we'll have more to report after that. Sorry, I just said that regarding the Ganyard situation, that we are still undergoing a third-party investigation, and there'll be more to report later on after that. Is there anything else that the board would like to address at this time? Okay, we are going into closed session in regards to contract negotiation. So at this time, if there's nothing else that...
I move that we go into closed session.
Roll call for that? Dana Cochrane?
Yes.
Kim Otterkirk?
Yes.
Sheila Murphy?
Yes.
Jessica Jernigan?
Yes.
Courtney Stegman?
Yes.
Malene Pingle?
Yes.
Amy Bann?
Yes.
Okay, we're back in open session. Is there anything else the board would like to address at this time? Not seeing anything. I call this meeting adjourned.